Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council Meeting and San Bruno Redevelopment Agency Meeting of January 24th, 2012. I'd like to ask for roll call, please.
Council Board Member O'Connell?
Here.
Council Board Member Medina?
Here.
Council Board Member Salazar?
Here.
Vice Chair?
Here.
Vice Mayor Ibera? Chair Mayor Rueng?
Here. And I'd also like to thank the San Bruno Garden Club for the lovely arrangement. They always provide for our meetings. City Clerk, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have a few announcements this evening. The first one is that this Thursday evening, the 26th, we will be holding a community meeting at the Church of the Highlands, 1900 Monterey Drive in San Bruno here to talk about the extent of proposed improvements, the schedule of work and possible street and landscape enhancements planned for the Glenview-Cressmore area. Second announcement is there will be a Cressmore Neighborhood Gathering from 2:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. this Saturday, January 28th, here at the Senior Center. And coffee and dessert will be served and the city staff will be available to discuss reconstruction efforts. So we hope you can all attend. Also, number three, we did have an incident today in San Bruno that involved a gas leak and I would like to ask Dennis Bosh to give us an update, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. Last Thursday at 556 Chestnut Avenue, we had a sewer lateral that was blocked or had failed. So what we did is we called USA Underground Alert and had the area marked for an upcoming excavation. We called in an emergency underground service alert. We then contracted a contractor on Friday to come. It was West Valley Construction. They dug down, replaced, and cleared the blockage in the line and replaced the portion of the sewer lateral. The home was then put back in service. The area was plated. We then sent our crews out this morning to take the plates off and start the backfill process. And as a last step of trying to get the wet backfill out of the ground, approximately 15 to 19 inches deep, the tooth of the backhoe made contact with the service line, not the gas main itself, but the service line that is off of the gas line to a house across the street. And it caused enough pressure to cause a rupture in the gas service line. At this point, I just came back 20 minutes ago. I talked to PG&E staff on site. They believe that the six people that are currently out of the gas service at this time, they're shooting for an approximate time of 11 o'clock tonight to have them back in service for full gas service. They will later on, the area will then be plated. Our crews actually are at this time putting the plates back on and they will replace, or at least PG&E advised me that they will be replacing the service line to the house across the street within the next few weeks.
City Manager?
If I could just add, thank you very much. Dennis is our wastewater services manager and was on scene at the work effort today where this incident occurred. I'd just like to add that our fire department responded along with PG&E, PG&E obviously, to deal with the repair to the gas service line itself. Our fire department evacuated a perimeter area as a precaution in order to assure the safety of our residents. And as you might imagine, the incident, although not of the serious nature that we have previously experienced here in San Bruno, did attract a great deal of media attention. Although, as Dennis indicated, the situation has been almost fully resolved and people who were impacted will be back in service this evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. We also have a presentation this evening, and this is a very special one. Our Senior Center is 25 years old. So we should congratulate the Senior Center, the city, the city council, all of San Bruno because this is the best center around. And as I told the seniors the other day when they were celebrating during the nice lunch, I said, "It's a beautiful building, lots of great rooms and lots of things to do, but it really is nothing without the participation of all the volunteers. You really make it happen." I'd like to present this to Bill Goff, and I'm just going to read it. It says, "Honoring San Bruno Senior Center's 25th Anniversary, Whereas the San Bruno Senior Center Opened to the Public on January 17th, 1987, and this year marks its 25th anniversary. And whereas seniors live healthy, active lives, and the San Bruno Senior Center provides social interaction with peers, a wide variety of activities, programs, and other benefits improving their lives in many ways, promoting mental and physical well-being. There are approximately 4.5 million people over the age of 65, and California has the largest adult population in the nation. And whereas each year the San Bruno Senior Center serves 5,000 congregant lunches, not only providing seniors with nourishment but also a sense of independence, 1,500 social service referrals are made annually, connecting seniors to critical resources and helping their families with personal choices. Transportation to and from the San Bruno Senior Center is also offered for those who don't drive, equalling 8,000 trips a year. And whereas the San Bruno Senior Center offers more than 70 classes and programs weekly, offering new skills, physical fitness and health awareness, and recreational activities, seniors can also go on special excursions and outings they would never attempt on their own, giving them a sense of freedom they would not have otherwise. And whereas more than 200 volunteers work at the San Bruno Senior Center giving 36,000 hours of service annually, would take at least 10 full-time employees to replicate what they do. One example is partnering with the Senior Advisory Board and staff to execute more than 50 fundraisers and special events each year. Now therefore, I, Jim Rueng, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor, do hereby honor the 25th anniversary of the San Bruno Senior Center and encourage the older residents of the community to enjoy the many excellent services and activities the center offers."
Well, I want to thank you on behalf of the San Bruno Senior Center. I just wish Wendy could have been here because she's really been the mainstay of this Senior Center since it opened. So all I can say is thank you for the recognition, and I invite all, anyone over 50, you know, this place is wide open for everybody who wants to come. And we've got quite a few people that come, maybe 200, 250 every day. So you're all invited. If you've passed that 50 mark, you're all invited to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Item number five, review of the agenda. I would like to move item 11, which is the report of the Personnel Board, to right after item number eight, public hearings. That's all right? Approval of the minutes? Any errors, omissions, corrections? Seeing none, they'll be approved as submitted? No minutes? I have none. Where are the minutes?
They'll be here next meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Carol. Item seven, consent calendar. All items are considered routine or implemented earlier council action that may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested by a council member, citizen, or staff. Is there anyone like to bring up anything under the consent agenda?
If not, I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Motion second to approve the calendar. On the question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Item number eight, public hearings. Notices have been published, posted, and mailed. We're going to hold a public hearing, waive the reading, and introduce an ordinance of the City of San Bruno repealing San Bruno Municipal Code Section 2.36.070 through 2.36.140 and amending Section 2.36.150 regarding or relating to the Personnel Board.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. City Council Liaison Arvin O'Connell attended the September 2011 Personnel Board meeting to discuss the Personnel Board's work program. The number of board members and the meeting schedule was discussed at this meeting. At that time, it was recommended that the number of board members be changed from a five-member to a three-member, and from a monthly meeting schedule to a quarterly meeting schedule and as needed. The City Council was presented this information in an oral report on November 8th. And on November 22nd, the City Council reviewed the draft ordinance and bylaws with the proposed changes and gave staff direction. At the December 2011 Board meeting, the Board brought up if the bylaws would allow for a minimum of three board members. The Board was advised that using this open-ended requirement would create some operational difficulties, and this was confirmed by the city attorney who advised that a precise number of members be used. If the City Council approves repealing and amending the listed sections of the municipal code this evening, the revised bylaws will be brought back to the February 14th City Council meeting for approval.
Okay. Any questions of Tammy at this time? All right. Seeing none from the council, we will open the public hearing. Anyone in the public like to speak to the council on this matter? If we close the public hearing, you're going to be precluded from talking to us about this again. Do I have some action?
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion second to close the public hearing. On the question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Discussion or action?
Through the chair. Just as I had indicated before, I have no problem with all the changes with the exception of the membership going from five to three. Again, I'm just going to reiterate that we had persons from the community that were interviewed, prepared to serve, to be able to fill the vacancy that we have. Again, I believe that we are asking of our residents and citizens to be engaged and be active in this community, and this is one part of it, to get a cross-section and a diversity of our community to serve. And I think by us limiting it down to three, again, a subcommittee of one, quorum of two, I don't believe is in the best interest of the Board nor for us as a president by this council as far as encouraging those residents in our community to serve.
Anyone else?
Through the chair.
Irene?
I appreciate all the points that Councilman Medina has brought forward. I'd just like to say that it's difficult, yes, there are many citizens who would like to serve, and we have appointed in the past three years, I believe, at least five different people who have applied for being on the Personnel Board. Unfortunately, after they try serving, they realize what they thought they were going to be doing is not what they actually have done. And I'm probably getting the numbers wrong, but ultimately, they stop coming. So then, we have another vacancy, it's hard to get business done, on and on and on. The other piece of this is right now and for the last year or so, there hasn't been a lot of business, substantive business, that needed to be done. So I hate to have citizens volunteer their time and give them busy work. I'd like them to volunteer for things that really make a difference. And the current Personnel Board have worked very hard in a lot of different, fairly boring from what I've seen myself, but crucial avenues. So we appreciate what they've done, but I think it's time to move on to this venue.
Through the chair. I do appreciate the Councilwoman's comments. I think that's why it's going quarterly, and that is because they have done a lot of work and therefore that doesn't require to meet monthly. And that might have been some of the issue as well as to maybe not being able to meet the quorum. I believe if we ask the Personnel Board, I think that they'd be willing to take on additional assignments or tasks, and I guess they can tell us that at some point if they're available and if we had things for them to review.
Anyone else? Any action by the council? Looking for a motion to waive the first reading and introduce the ordinance.
I've moved to waive the first reading.
Your second?
I'm a second.
Motion second to waive the first reading. On the question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, I'll introduce the ordinance for adoption.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
No.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ibera?
Aye.
Mayor Rueng?
Aye. We'll move right to item number 11, which is the annual report of the Personnel Board.
City Council, my name is Ed Fuentes. I'm the Chair of the Personnel Board, and I proudly this evening like to present the annual report. First of all, I want to give salutations to my fellow board members. Amaree Jones, Vice Chair, is not present for this evening, but I'd like to thank her very much for her participation, her help, contribution for last year. With me in the room is Ed Commerfer. Will you please raise your hand, Ed? Thank you. And the Honorable Joe Roberts. And of course, we have one vacancy. This year, the Board had completed a comprehensive review of all city job descriptions in every department. We actually completed this task. I think it was a multi-year effort, sometimes a very scrutiny, very tedious effort, but we made it happen. We also recommended the extension of the Fire Captain Eligibility List for a Department for Promotional Opportunity. That was thoroughly reviewed and analyzed, and we determined the extension was in fact warranted. And lastly, as was previously discussed by the City Council, we recommended changes to the Municipal Code and Personnel Board to allow us to become as effective as possible. We do recognize and we are more than willing to serve at the discretion of the City Council, and we're looking forward to do that for next year. For future goals, we plan to continue to review the status of all recruitments, eligibility lists, and also review any compliance reports that the city must submit to the government. We continue to evaluate our processes. We work very closely with Tammy to ensure that all recruitment processes are followed in an open and equal opportunistic manner. We'll continue to proctor written exams and evaluation tests as needed and as invited to do so. And of course, as new job descriptions arise, we will wholeheartedly review those as needed. Thank you very much for supporting us this past year.
Any questions of our Personnel Boards? I just want to say, as I do with all the boards, commissions, and committees, we couldn't do it without you. And I sat in a number of Personnel Board meetings a few years ago, and they can be kind of, you know, boring, to be perfectly honest with you, but very, very necessary because that's sort of what makes this city run, all of our employees. So very, very important task. I want to say on behalf of the council, if I may, thank you very, very much.
Very welcome. It's an honor to serve. Thank you.
Item number nine, public comment on items not on the agenda. It is the council's policy to refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation and or action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendized pursuant to state law. Would anyone like to address the council under public comment? Seeing none, we'll get right into conduct of business. 10A, receive and accept the annual audit and financial statements for the city and the redevelopment agency. We're going to look at adopting a resolution accepting the city's comprehensive annual financial report, single audit, and Measure A funds audit report for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2011, and also look at adopting a resolution accepting the city's comprehensive annual financial report and the San Bruno Redevelopment Agency audit report for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2011. Kim?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. Tonight you will be hearing from the city's independent audit firm, Babernick Tryon &amp; Day, regarding the results for the audit for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2011. The 2010-11 audit represents the first year of a three-year audit contract with VTD at the city. If you might recall, the city did a competitive RFP process in the spring and selected VTD through that process. So with that, I will turn it over to Ahmad Garabe, who is an audit partner with VTT.
Good evening. My name is Ahmad Garabe. I am the partner in charge of the audit for the city of San Bruno. What you have over here tonight is a bunch of reports with our opinion on the fair presentation of these reports. Our audit contract requires us to do an audit of the city financial statements, which is what they call the comprehensive annual financial report. In addition, there are sub-reports, if you may, that are required to be audited, such as the RDA, Measure A, and also are required to give opinions on compliance with the laws and regulations as well as compliance with federal granting requirements. So you have a bunch of reports over here tonight that you will have to accept, but the main one is the city comprehensive annual financial report, which is basically an overall picture of the city financial position. Opinions range from an unqualified or what we call a clean opinion to a disclaimer or an adverse opinion. And what we issued is a clean opinion or an unqualified opinion, which means that the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respect. What you see in terms of the numbers here in the financial statements are fairly stated, which means that we have tested them and we have verified in all material respect that these numbers are fairly stated. We did issue an unqualified opinion on the city cafer, on the RDA, an unqualified opinion on Measure A. And in addition, because you're a government, we are required to come to you and describe to you whether we had significant deficiencies or material weaknesses, as well as compliance with the laws and regulations, compliance with the federal granting requirements. As a condition for getting your federal grants, every year you're supposed to get an annual audit to tell you whether you complied or did not comply. Also, that was an unqualified opinion, which means that we didn't have any findings or any deficiencies in internal control. On the next slide, what we did here at the city of San Bruno is we verified the account balances. We did substantive audit procedures such as confirmations, such as tracing the numbers that you see in the financial statements to documentary evidence to ensure that these numbers are presented to you, are fairly stated. In addition, we're required to obtain an understanding of the internal control of the city, and we did somehow extensive testing when it came to your cash receipts and your utility billing process. We tested the internal controls over there. We selected a significant sample as to how the city conduct and perform the billing and the manner that they do the site collections and the manner that they record these amounts on the financial statements. And we also did a walkthrough or an understanding of the internal control over cash disbursements, over payroll. Multiple areas is what we visited, and we obtained an understanding as to what's going on, and we are required to come to you and report to you whether we had any exceptions or any findings as it relates to these items. And we had no exceptions or any findings as it relates to these items. Over and above, the city in 2010 is a first-year participant in the GFPA Award. The GFPA Award stands for Government Finance Officer Association, and what they do is they have a bunch of reviewers out there who review the financial statements, and they bring expert people who reviews these financial statements to ensure that they are in compliance with Government Accounting Standards Board. And they give you an award about six or seven months after, and the city did indeed receive the award for excellence in financial reporting. Now, we have three levels of communications that we're required to do, two of which are in writing, and one of them, we can choose the manner that we communicate that with you. In terms of deficiencies in internal control or in terms of non-compliance, there's a material weakness and a significant deficiency, and we did not note any of those. Then the third level, which is the lowest level of those, is a control deficiency. And a control deficiency is not so significant enough to warrant, you know, major changes in the procedures, but nevertheless, the city did implement our recommendations. We had some control deficiencies as it relates to the federal compliance. The city is required to check each vendor that they contract with, with federal money, and ensure that that vendor is not debarred. Now, based on my experience, the bulk of these vendors, almost 99.9% of these vendors are not debarred, but nevertheless, the procedure has to be at the city. And we noted that that procedure was not there, so we recommended that this procedure would be implemented, and the city did do so. We also did site visits. Whenever there's cash that is being collected at different areas, we kind of do a sample and we select areas that we would want to go to. And we selected one site where cash collections specifically for the swimming pool were just being collected and given to the city with no tracking, no ticket sales or anything like that. So what we recommended that the city would do is have pre-numbered ticket sales to ensure that the cash collected equates to the amounts of tickets that were sold. And the third one is related to the IT system. We noticed that people have access to payroll and HR system, and the two should be segregated from each other because having them correlated with each other would allow someone to create a phony employee and process payroll for that phony employee. So what we provided the recommendation to the city is to segregate and have the IT system for the individuals who are in charge of the HR function completely independent from the payroll function, and the city did implement that. We're also required to tell you whether we encountered any difficulties in the performance of the audit, and I'm pleased to let you know that we encountered no difficulties. In fact, this audit has gone very smooth, and the city staff has provided us with more than what we have asked for in terms of audit documentations. And whatever we asked them for, they were always responsive. You know, you have, I don't know, 150 pages worth of financial information. I know it's a lot of information that you have to go through. So what I'm going to do is just pinpoint you to some significant items in there in the financial statements. As it relates to the pension and post-employment benefits, and I'm going to explain that further in detail in the next slide, you do have an unfunded liability for the pension in the amount of $15.3 million, and an unfunded liability for the post-employment benefits in the amount of $41.6 million.
And I just want to call your attention to where you can see those numbers in the audit. The footnotes to the financial statements provide more detailed information on how those numbers are calculated. And the $15.3 million figure that he referenced for pension, that number only represents the miscellaneous unit. That does not include public safety, so Ahmad will go into greater detail in a couple of minutes about some changes related to pension reporting that are coming down the pipeline. But just for your information, that $15.3 only represents the miscellaneous unit for PERS. The unfunded liability for the OPEB, $41.6 million, is related to the city's retiree healthcare benefits. As you're aware, the retirees are pooled with current city employees as part of the Teamsters Health and Welfare Trust Fund. The $41.6 million figure really represents the total obligation of the city for retiree medical as of June 30, 2011. So that represents all the benefits that had been earned as of that date over the next 30 years. So it's an actuarial valuation over 30 years of what that cost will be. If you look at the financial statements, the footnote, it walks you through what the annual contribution that would be required if the city were to fund that OPEB contribution, that OPEB liability, and that it really amounts to basically $3 million a year that the city would have to contribute in order to fully fund that OPEB valuation. So I mean, this is just skipping the surface of this issue, but it's something that I just want to draw to your attention and also just to provide a little bit more background for the numbers that you're seeing here.
New accounting pronouncements, which deals with what Ms. Duran had just stated, there's one that is coming out that is going to impact the governmental financial reporting industry. It's massive. Everybody's talking about it. It's something that is going to be very significant in terms of how this information is presented. to be very significant in terms of how these information, how this information is presented on the financial statements. Right now, what you do is you disclose if the information is available, and as you may know, for the, for one of the plans, the information is not available. But if the information is available, you're required to disclose your unfunded liability. The new pronouncement that is expected to be effective for 2014 actually requires you to record these amounts on the financial statements. And we have a balance sheet over here at the City of San Bruno, and that balance sheet is going to be hit with a liability for these pension liabilities. And there are three plans. One is the OPEB, the other one is the miscellaneous plan. Those, those two, we have the amounts for. The third one will probably have to be calculated by CalPERS, and that information will be provided to you. Now, what's going to happen is that these numbers are going to be recorded on the balance sheet, and it's going to impact as to how much, you know, the creditors and everybody else, when they look at the balance sheet of the City of San Bruno, as is with any other governmental agencies, they look at your total assets and total liabilities. And right now, that number is not in the liabilities. And it has been like that for, I don't know, 20, 25 years since these pronouncements came out. If you go out to the commercial industry, that whole number is on the balance sheet. But if, in the, in the governmental practice, that number is just simply disclosed in the financial statements. And in 2014, those numbers are going to start being recorded on the financial statements. It's not a funding requirement. You don't have to fund these pension and post-employment benefit liabilities, but it's just a recording requirement, and it's a disclosure requirement. So it's not something that you would have to pay for, because that liability has always been there, but it's just going to be disclosed on the financial statements and recorded on the financial statements. And with that, that's the conclusion of our presentation. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions of our auditor or of Kim, Financial Director?
To the Chair. You've already alluded to the segregations with the payroll and HR. And that was part of my question, was how in your first year with us here, in your review, do you see the segregation of duty in the variety of departments, especially when it comes to the cash checks, credit cards, as well as a secondary review?
We tested segregation of duties. Whenever there was cash that is being handled, we tested the segregation of functions and duties as it relates to cash receipts, as it relates to accounts payable and cash disbursements, and also as it relates to payroll and HR function. And it's not like they were not segregated. They were segregated, and they passed 100% when it came to cash receipts and when it came to disbursements. As it relates to payroll, which is also a dual test with the IT system, is what we did is we sat with a payroll employee, and we told him, "Log into the HR system and show me if you can add an employee in there to see if that employee is able to process payroll for that particular person." And we noted, and we don't know what the extent of the login information or the login capability that employee had, but we noted that payroll employees were able to access the system of the HR, and the HR system had the ability to access the payroll system. So it's just an IT issue. And what the city did is protect, password protected the login, so that if you want to log into one module, you shouldn't be able to log into the other module. And that's what we did. But other than that, in terms of segregation, everything else passed.
And was there any, do you have any assessment or views as far as policies, procedures, and are the structure on the department and the criteria in which they follow?
In terms of cash?
I would say for the department itself, policy procedures that are, that are followed, maintained, or practiced, or?
We, we do look at the policies and procedures as part of understanding the internal control only to the extent that they relate to the financial statements. If there are other policies and procedures that the city has that does not impact the numbers themselves, we don't look at them. But we did, we did look at the policies, like investment policy, accounts payable policy, purchasing policy, and so on and so forth. And we looked at them from an internal control perspective, just to make sure that assets are safeguarded. But when it came to other policies that are not relevant to the financial statements, we did not look at those.
Correct. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we're looking for action, two, adoption, two resolutions.
To the Chair. I'd just like to thank VTD for, for their services for this first year, and also congratulate the Finance Department for their, I know, all their hard work, day in and day out, and also congratulations on that award for excellence in financial reporting. With that, I'd like to introduce the resolution for adoption, one at a time, I guess.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ibera.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
One more resolution.
I don't know exactly what they are, but I'll introduce it.
Vice Chair Ibera.
Aye.
Board Member O'Connell.
Aye.
Board Member Medina.
Aye.
Board Member Salazar.
Aye.
Chair Ruane.
Aye. All right. Item 10B, adopt a resolution amending the enforceable obligation payment schedule for the San Bruno Redevelopment Agency.
Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, last June, the Governor signed two bills into law as part of the strategy to balance the state's budget deficit. ABX 126 was a dissolution bill that voted to dissolve redevelopment agencies unless they prescribed to an alternate form of redevelopment, pay-to-play form of redevelopment outlined under ABX 127. In July 2011, the California Redevelopment Agency and League of California Cities requested the California Supreme Court to acquire AB 26 and 27 unconstitutional due to the fact that they were in violation of Proposition 22. The court responded by issuing a stay on the implementation of all provisions of AB 27 and most provisions of AB 26. However, one of the provisions of AB 26 that did remain in effect during this stay was the requirement of all redevelopment agencies to adopt an enforceable obligation payment schedule, which is also referred to as the EOPS, for the timeframe of August through December 2011. And the San Bruno Redevelopment Agency did adopt the EOPS, that initial EOPS, on September 13. The passage of AB 26 and the subsequent stay issued by the California Supreme Court also restricted redevelopment agencies from entering into any new contracts and making any payments that were not listed on the, the EOPS schedule. So moving forward to December 29, 2011, and as you're aware, the California Supreme Court issued its decision which found AB 26 to be constitutional and found AB 27, the opt-in bill, to be invalid. As a result of that decision, redevelopment agencies will be dissolved effective February 1, 2012, which is a four-month delay from the initial date of October 1, as outlined in AB 26. The law states that the San Bruno Redevelopment Agency and Successor Agency can only make payments on enforceable obligations listed on the EOPS until the next form of payment schedule, which is referred to as the Recognized Obligation Payment Schedule, or the ROOPS, is prepared and approved by the Successor Agency and Oversight Board. So, as, so the EOPS is a form of a payment schedule that is adopted by the redevelopment agency, and the ROOPS, the Recognized Obligation Payment Schedule, will be adopted by the successor agency. It will be brought forth probably at the second meeting in February, and that will basically outline, it will be very similar to the EOPS, but it will outline the payments to be repaid by the successor agency. And then it will be subsequently reviewed by the Oversight Board for final authorization. So, given the possibility that that final version of the ROOPS may not be approved until mid to late May, it's recommended that the redevelopment agency amend the existing EOPS for the timeframe of January 1 through June 30, 2012. The obligations listed on the amended EOPS presented for your consideration tonight have all been previously considered by the City Council, either through the budget process or separate council action, with the exception of one item that I'd like to call to your attention. Line items one and two on the EOPS list recommends repayment of the outstanding $2.9 million of city advances to the redevelopment agency over the next six months. This, I'd like to call that to your attention, because this is a policy issue in that the City Council has not previously discussed repayment terms of those advances. However, we are recommending that these advances be programmed into the amended EOPS in order to basically demonstrate that the city is anxious and would like to see the timely repayment of these advances. Just a side note, it's the, we can begin the repayment of these advances, however, all this will be subject to approval by the Oversight Board in coming months. The result of this repayment of the advances also has an impact on the city's general fund as a result of a lower interest payment received by the general fund. If you're, just to remind you that the city currently charges interest on those advances, and so the general fund receives about $173,000 annually in form of an interest payment. So the repayment of those advances would result in the elimination of that interest payment. And if it were paid over the next six months, that would be about $50,000 for this year, and then $173,000 in subsequent years. So that concludes the presentation on the amended EOPS tonight. I just want to call to your attention that this will be likely the last action item for the East San Bruno Redevelopment Agency, unless there's any last-minute legislation that passes extending that timeframe. Just very quickly, some next steps that you guys should be aware of. I mean, basically, as the law currently stands, redevelopment agencies will be dissolved effective next Wednesday, February 1. At that time, the city is required to essentially transfer all redevelopment agency assets and housing assets to a separate trust account that we will set up next week, and those assets will be held by the successor agency, but they will be shown separate from city funds. And some action items that the Council will be seeing in the next month will be the appointment of two members to the Oversight Board. There's a seven-member Oversight Board for each former redevelopment agency. The mayor has the appointment of two, one representing himself, and one which should be an appointment of a former employee of the redevelopment agency. And then finally, as I alluded to earlier, would be the adoption of the Recognized Obligation Payment Schedule, which we foresee bringing back at the second meeting in February. So.
Any questions?
Questions?
To the Chair. More on the last comment you just made on the Oversight Board. Are we going to get some more information coming back as far as the duties, their powers, their obligations, their composition, so that we here as on the Council, I know you alluded to the one particular point, but obviously there's others that sit on there. So would that also come back at that point, so that we would have a clear direction and understanding of that?
Yes. This will come back as another, as an item at a separate meeting. Just so that you're aware, the seven members of the board, two of which are appointed by the mayor, others, two members come from the county board as supervisors. One comes from the County Superintendent of Education. One is an appointee of the Chancellor of the California Community College District, and one other member is the largest, basically an appointee of the largest special district taxing entity in the county. So those are the other members that will be appointed to this Oversight Board.
And will we also have the other detailed information as far as, thank you for the composition of them.
Yes.
Duties, responsibilities, and, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Action?
Board Member O'Connell.
Aye.
Board Member Medina.
Aye.
Board Member Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Chair Ibera.
Aye.
Chair Ruane.
Aye. Item 10C, adopt a resolution approving the City of San Bruno investment policy. City Treasurer.
Honorable Mayor, Chairman of the City Council, as a background, the city's investment policy must be presented to the Council for adoption in the chair of the meeting. In November 2008, the city adopted an investment policy statement that incorporated changes in response to Lehman Brothers bankruptcy and the effects on the city's account with the San Mateo County Investment Pool. Specifically, the city adopted a balanced approach, allocating assets equally amongst the LA fund, the San Mateo County Investment Pool, and US government and its agency securities. The 2011 audit found that the allocation of assets was slightly out of balance, mainly due to the timing of credited interest and the federal government actively refinancing its existing debt, resulting in securities held being paid off early. The auditor suggested including the words, quote, "approximately 33% for each investment category" to allow time to rebalance the portfolio. This wording has now been included in the investment policy statement. I would direct, direct you to pages five and six, under the headings of Investments and Strategies. That is the only change contemplated at this point, and I would respectfully request that you adopt these changes.
Any questions of our City Treasurer? Action?
I'll introduce the resolution.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ibera.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. Item 10D, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a two-year sewer spot repair contract with Trinet Construction, incorporated in an amount not to exceed $1,203,500.
Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, good evening. Tonight, I will focus in my presentation on the purpose and the funding for this action, and I will let Dennis Bash, the Sewer System Manager, to share with you some example how this contract will be used in the field. The city is a sewer discharger, managing our collection system, and also jointly owning our sewer treatment plant throughout San Francisco. Management of the system is taking place in a regulatory environment. Federal and state laws are established for the management of the sewer discharge. All of these regulations are summarized in a statewide general waste discharge requirement for sanitary sewer systems. The city is obligated to manage and operate our system in that framework and accordingly to those laws. As a result of historically high number of SSO, the city entered and accepted and signed a settlement agreement with the Regional Board and with baykeepers in July of last year. This order and agreement is performance outcome-based and also prescriptive, the agreement with the baykeepers. By 2019, the city has to be below eight respective three SSO a year. Just to show you our history, in the last four years, the city had 54, 52, 30, and 18 SSOs last year. To achieve this outcome, a multifaceted approach has to be deployed. First, a robust preventive maintenance program has to be implemented, such as system-wide cleaning, root control, enhanced root control, enhanced grease management, effective response to any SSO, and spot repair. An aggressive main and pump station repair and replacement has to be implemented also. Beside the aggressive CIP and operation and maintenance, also this agreement includes other program enhancements, enhancement, such as private letter program like in the Shore Park neighborhood, capacity assessment, management plan update, and many other program enhancement. enhancement. All of these needed actions are captured in a implementation plan. As presented to you earlier, the estimated cost, the cost impact over the life of this agreement is around $8.7 million. Even if in the last few years, major steps were taken, as you can see from the clear decline in the number of SSOs, as a result, of course, of your prior decisions, and also the heroic work done by our sewer division, this program must be fully implemented in order to achieve the set outcomes by 2019. This item tonight is part of the preventive maintenance element of this plan, specifically the spot repair and repair program. Using the video inspection results about how I indicated in the staff report, about 450 locations needs spot repair. Performing the cyclic maintenance on the system takes up, takes up the available internal resources of our department. Reason why additional resources are needed to manage this additional increased need. Back in 2007, the city contracted with West Valley Emergency Maintenance and Repair Contract for water and sewer. This year, the city took advantage of our last option for, for the extension of that contract. To meet this need and demand, you went, the department went out last August with a bid document to seek proposal for, for this additional work for sewer and water. The city did not receive any bid proposal. Reason why, based on the input received from the contractor, the department restructured the bid document and went out for another bid, only just for sewer, last December with the intent to go out separately for sewer and separately for water, and received three bid proposals. The lowest qualified bidder is Trinet Construction, and that is our recommendation for you tonight to award the contract to the lowest bidder. In, in our operational budget, it's included $450,000 for contract repair, the scope of this contract. This contract is for two years with the option to extend two more years if the, if the city will choose so. But will cover three budget years and not two budget years, considering that now is end of January. This action requested by me tonight is, does not require any additional budget adjustment, and I will let now Dennis to share with you a very specific situation, how this contract will be used.
So I'll be showing you some pipe conditions needing repair, and I'm going to try to use my pointer to best show you and describe to you the problems that we have in the field. So first starting off, this is a pipe in good condition, and you'll see in the next pictures to come, there's no water pooling, there's no roots coming down, there's no, there's no sags, or what we refer to as bellies, low spots that, that water forms. And basically, you just see a cylindrical pipe with no problems. So this, this picture shows what we refer to as a pipe offset. And you can see how basically the, more of an oval, it's not fully cylindrical anymore. You can see a pond of water where debris and solids tend to settle out, which eventually causes a blockage. There's about an inch, inch and a half area of pipe that's not in our favor because the flow, the flow is coming down this way to the pipe, so it hits a lip, and then it eventually starts to back up and a blockage forms, and then it backs up towards the cleanout. This is a, a broken pipe. It created a two-foot wide void and sinkhole in the, in the street above, actually. You can see where, from the very first picture, how it was perfect, the pipe has actually deteriorated, fallen down, sunk. You can see a crack in the pipe downstream. Debris has started to deform, and actually above where the sinkhole is, is sand, soil comes down, falls in the trough, effluent picks it up, carries it away, and then a sinkhole forms in the street or sidewalk above. This is a root intrusion from a joint. So if a joint or any part of the, the pipe cracks, roots start to grow, and if we can't get it out by maintenance, we have to dig down and repair it. Again, the roots stop any solids from getting by them. Eventually, it acts as a, as a filter, and it just plugs up. Here's a pipe where the entire opening is just this now compared to the first picture that I showed, where you had a pretty sizable opening. Here, the entire pipe, this entire pipe has moved over and only left an area here. This is silt in this area with, with water, and basically effluent is at some point getting out of the pipe and hardly making the turn down the pipe, the downstream pipe that would be more over here. This is what we refer to as a pipe settlement sag or a belly, where basically, at some point in time, the entire pipe section, however long it is, has depressed, and basically there's a complete pool of water. Depending on how long the belly is, effluent just gets in the line and sits, and then solids begin to settle out, and again, then you don't have any flow. Much like the first picture that we showed of the perfect pipe, when you have, when the pipe's in good condition and you have the proper slope, none of this, none of this water's there. I actually couldn't put a, couldn't put a, a picture of a completely blocked pipe because if I did, then you wouldn't be able to see anything. Which we incur quite often. So some examples of upcoming repairs. Were we replacing larger segments of pipe in poor condition? One, one, one example is just from the rec center in city, city park out to Crystal Springs Road. We planned to burst, we planned to pipe burst approximately 100 feet of sewer main between the rec center and Crystal Springs and install two manholes. The existing pipe has settled or has a belly, is undersized and in poor condition. Again, it's a, it's a public utility, there's a larger bathroom than what you would have in a normal house, and it has a higher amount of flow and, and solids from that, from that building. This, this, this project or individual location is, the cost is approximately $30,000. It also works towards our commitment of replacing locations that has caused, that have caused SSOs. We've had multiple category one, which is the more severe, where we don't recover the sewage from this, from blockages, from, from this line that feeds, or that comes from the, the recreation building, and it goes right into the storm spillway and storm culvert right there by the city, city park courtyard or play area. Some other areas that we'll be doing are approximately 20 locations east of El Camino Real, where the individual excavations are pretty much around six to eight feet in, in depth and size and, and diameter and length of pipe, and those are going to cost approximately $900 to $1,500 per location. Some repairs are similar, but a lot, a lot are different. Some you have to repair concrete, some I have to do asphalt, sometimes could be in dirt, so it, it changes in range. One thing I'd like to call attention to is that these pictures that I showed you are actually taken from our own equipment that we've been able to purchase and were approved through operational budgets in the past. A, a technology that is, that has really helped us to best assess and prioritize and to strategically plan on how we do our system. So the pictures that you're seeing are actually the, the work that we've been able to provide, and it's helping us to, to meet the overall goal of, of looking at these problems and trying to stop SSOs. In the last few years, major steps have been taken to lower the annual number of SSOs. This has been represented by a lower number this year. However, this program, and along with other operational programs, must be implemented to achieve the future annual SSO commitment targets for 2019, the Clara alluded to earlier. Any questions on the slides?
Any questions of staff?
Both of us are standing for questions.
Through the chair. Michael.
I was wondering, as you were showing the pictures of the conditions of some of those pipes, is there any opportunity either through using different materials or assessing the area to prevent those sorts of conditions in the future after the pipes are replaced? And also, if we use pipe bursting, I know it's a much easier and more economical way of replacing the pipe, but do we miss out on an opportunity to assess what's under the ground and perhaps remediate some of the conditions surrounding the pipe that may have led to the failures?
In each situation, will be a more holistic assessment made of how many spot, how many locations you have on a segment of pipe, how many spot repair you need to perform on, and if there are too many spot repairs on the same section of main, then you are not repairing those parts, but you are replacing that whole section of the main. And that will not be a so-called spot repair program, but will be as part of the main replacement program, and that whole section of the main will be replaced at that time, then will be assessed by the engineering staff what will be the best solution to replace that section, either using different type of material of the pipe, and also if pipe bursting is the best and cheapest or best quality replacement of that section or not.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions of staff? Irene?
We're having a side discussion here. We couldn't remember how the pipe bursting works. Does the pipe have a camera in front of it, or is it pulled by a cable as it goes through?
Pipe bursting is basically a process where you dig, you dig at one end, and you put in a machine that sends a cable downstream to a separate excavation, and then a disc is attached to that cable, and that machine at the first hole then basically hydraulically pulls that disc through. Where there's a machine on the other side where the, the piping brought in is attached to that disc, and it's vibrated in. So what it does is, is that cable helps pull the disc while it's being hydraulically hit, and it goes through the pipe, and it, it pulls in the new pipe, and it bursts the existing pipe to a, to a bigger diameter so the other pipe can come through. The, the one thing to remember with pipe bursting is, is that when you pipe burst, it, it carries the same line of travel or sight as the existing, so that if there's a belly in the line, as you bring it through, as you bring it through underground, it would follow that belly. It has to be a line that is actually, doesn't have a, a belly or sag, it has a, a good line of slope. In order to get that, then you would have to open cut or dig a trench and install a new pipe.
Okay.
So there's, there's some rules depending on what we need to do that would govern how we could make a certain repair or rehabilitation.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Or action?
I'll introduce the resolution.
Council Member O'Connell.
Aye.
Council Member Medina.
Aye.
Council Member Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ibera.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. Item number 10E, adopt resolutions authorizing construction and design work associated with the Crestmore Glenview Neighborhood Reconstruction Project. We'll be looking for two resolutions to be approved. The first one is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a construction contract for the Crestmore Glenview Neighborhood Reconstruction, Phase One Water System Improvement Project with KC Construction, Inc., in the amount of $517,457, and approving a construction budget of $645. The second resolution is a resolution amending the contract with BKF Engineers, Inc., for design engineering services related to the Crestmore Glenview Neighborhood Reconstruction and increasing this contract amount by $405,100. And before we have staff, I'd just like to ask the city attorney a quick question. I received some calls today regarding the contractors that we use and get bids from for some of this restoration, and this happened to come from some unions, wondering if we had any flexibility in requiring that some of these be unioned, and do we or do we not? And maybe you could explain that to us so it's all clear.
Sure, Mr. Mayor, as you and the council know, these are public projects, and the state law mandates, requires that the city pay prevailing, or that the contractor pay prevailing wages. Actually, the city makes that a condition of the contract with the contractor, and all the bidders are aware of that requirement when they bid on the contract, and they're agreeing that if they get the low bid and it's awarded to them, that they will in fact pay prevailing wages. As you know, the city is required either to award the contract to the low bidder or to reject all bids and start over again, and that's certainly something that you can ask staff about if you have a question about that. But if the city does in fact award the contract to the low bid, the city can be assured that the contractor is required to comply with state law and with our contract, with, with the contractor to pay prevailing wages.
And the prevailing wage is in fact the union wage?
That's right.
Right, and they are required, I believe, to use apprentices on these projects, which are mostly trained by the union.
Right, the, the state requirement and our requirement is that they pay those, those wage scales.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Staff report, please. Harry?
Honorable mayor, members of the city council, I'm Harry Burrows, the city's project manager for the Crestmore Glenview Reconstruction Project. The action before the city council tonight represents the continuing implementation of elements that are part of the rebuilding of the Crestmore neighborhood. Two separate items are before you tonight. The first item is the award of the construction contract for the Phase One Water System Improvements. In these improvements, if you look at the exhibit up here at Sneethe, they're represented by the blue lines, and what they entail is new water lines and new water line connections to a 14-inch water line, existing 14-inch water line in Sneethe Lane, as well as two pressure-reducing stations. And the project, when completed, will help provide more reliable water pressures and flows to the neighborhood during peak demand periods. The city advertised for bids on this project in December of last year and opened bids on January 10th. City received nine bids. The bids ranged from a low of $517,500 to the high bid of $788,000. The engineers estimate for the project was $650,000. Couple things are worth noting. The lowest bidder, KC Construction Company, was about 20% below the engineers estimate. Additionally, the lowest five bidders were within about 10% of each other, and that's reflective of the current competitive bid environment in today's economy. So we were pleased with, with this bid spread. KC Construction's low bid of $517,547 was reviewed by staff and deemed to be both responsive and responsible. Staff recommends award of the contract to KC Construction and the establishment of a construction budget of $650,000. The additional funds in the construction budget include a 15% contingency, as well as an allowance for contract administration and inspection costs. The second item before you tonight is an amendment to the design contract with BKF Engineers. Engineers. BKF previously was contracted with the city in June of last year to design the repairs and reconstruction of the fire damaged area. That contract was for $298,000. On November 8th of 2011, the city council held a study session in which staff outlined recommendations for repairs and replacement of infrastructure beyond the immediate fire damaged area. These additional improvements more than doubled the original scope in terms of area and work. On December 13th, city council confirmed the extent to these additional improvements and directed staff to proceed with the design. Staff has negotiated a contract amendment with BKF Engineers in the amount of $406,100 to perform this additional work. This proposed amendment will cover the additional work contemplated to design the infrastructure throughout the entire neighborhood. And staff recommends that the contract be amended to exclude this work. With that, I end the staff report.
Harry, when you say Phase One, compared to what? Phase Two, what comes after Phase One? This is just the main tie-in to Sneethe Lane so that we can bring new water service to the fire area as well as service the homes now that are bigger, that have sprinklers requirements and things?
Yes. What this project does is it essentially helps us blend water from one higher pressure zone down into this neighborhood, which is a lower pressure zone during peak demand periods. The future phases of improvements will include the replacement and repair of the water lines, sewer lines, storm drain lines throughout the entire neighborhood, based upon the direction that we received from council on December 13th.
Okay. And then BKF has had a contract already, we're going to bump that up if it's approved. And that encompasses the design for all of that in the whole neighborhood?
Correct. That'll include the civil engineering design for the water lines, sewer lines, storm drain lines, and the roadway repair and replacement throughout the entire neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of staff?
Through the chair.
Irene?
In your staff report, you talk about potholding of utilities. Can you explain what that is?
Yeah, potholding of utilities is essentially excavating down to verify the depth and location of utilities.
Okay, great. And then I know there's going to be a community meeting on Thursday to discuss all of this, plus perhaps undergrounding utilities. If it is, if the council decides to go forward with undergrounding utilities, that would be, that's not included in this, correct? As far as design goes?
Correct. That is not included in BKF's contract.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or action?
I'll introduce the resolution. Do you want both or one at a time?
One at a time, please.
Okay. The first one, authorizing city manager to execute a construction contract for the Crestmore Glenview Neighborhood Reconstruction, Phase One.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ibera?
Aye.
Mayor Ruen?
Aye.
And I'll introduce the second resolution, amending the contract with BKF Engineers.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ibera?
Aye.
Mayor Ruen?
Aye. Item 10F, receive report regarding Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agencies, Basque, sustainable landscape project at Fire Station Number 51.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. This item is an informational item only, no action is required this evening. However, staff is interested in council comments, questions, or any input. And we will be bringing that back for the rest of the process. Staff has been working with Basque, Basque, the Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency, which represents approximately 1.7 million people within the counties of Alameda, Santa Clara, and San Mateo. Basque is encouraging the efficient use of water for landscaping projects and is going around the area, offering classes, both lecture and hands-on classes, in their goal of introducing sustainable landscaping for both residential and commercial use. Staff contacted Basque representatives and we have set up a class that we will be hosting in May. We, after looking at several sites within the city, we are recommending that the classes be held at Station 51. This would be the lawns in front, right outside, adjacent to El Camino Real. Because of the size, it's conducive to the class. We can have the class either within the station or over in the lower level of the library. And then the size of these lawns is approximately what we're looking for in terms of the number of participants to come out and do the hands-on renovation of these two areas. But those lawns are also very visible, where there can be a lot of people passing by. We will be able to really showcase the opportunities for other agencies, businesses, residents, to do similar type landscaping projects that again will reduce the amount of water used for those. Basque has, the last couple of cities that they've gone to, they have gone to Palo Alto and to Sunnyvale. They have held classes in both of those areas. Here you can see that one was an indoor lecture, the other was outdoor hands-on experience, again with Sunnyvale. The before, the after. This was immediately after it was planted. It will take a couple of years before all the materials grow. The Basque landscape architects will be working with city staff on materials that are suitable for our climate, plants, plant materials that have been very effective in San Bruno, to make sure that we get the right varieties there and we don't get things that maybe are more conducive to Sunnyvale's or Palo Alto's climates. And so some, these are some of, this is an example of a residential area that's been transformed. It is the same house. They obviously did other work to the house as well, but that is the same landscaping area that was done. And this is a house that was down in Sunnyvale, was part of the project down there. And that is the report. We'd be happy to answer any questions or take any input and bring that back to Basque.
Any questions or input?
They all look to me. I'm very excited about this program. I heard about it through Basque. And it does take two years unfortunately to really mature everything. But I think in the long run, we will have a great front showcase and hopefully encourage people, myself included, I want to do my lawn, to go over from having a high water use lawn to something more conducive to the neighborhoods. So I'm looking forward to doing it. I hope to get my hands dirty at the meetings too. So Randy, do we need to sign, do people need to sign up? Or actually at Operation Clean Sweep, perhaps we could have some kind of sign up there maybe and publicity? It would be a good place for people.
It'd be great to do it at Operation Clean Sweep, which is May 5th this year. If there are openings, we will be sending out flyers in March or April. They will be going out through the water bills. They will also be going out through all the various other means that we have to encourage people to sign up for the class. But the class, I think there's, we can take approximately 80 people?
Oh, good.
In the class. So there should be plenty of space. And if there's not, then we will be able to work with other agencies that are holding similar classes and get our people registered.
Okay, great.
And also just like to add that after the work is done, we will be promoting this piece through the Recreation Activity Guide or other sources, through the Next Focus and things like that, to show people what the possibilities are. So not just completing it here, but also bringing it to their attention that here's a spot, go look at it and see what can be done in either your residence or in your business.
Yes. And I'm hoping that we can expand this later at the city library and around the area as well. Thank you.
Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item 10G, adopt a resolution approving the final map and accepting dedication of land for public use for the Cedar Mills subdivision.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. Before you is Cedar Mills subdivision. This is to adopt a resolution approving the final map as well as accepting dedications of land. These are the public utility easements. As you see before you, the Cedar Mills subdivision is located at a corner of Cedar Mills and Pepper Drive, adjacent to 280. These are 14 lots that will be subdivided for single-family residences. These are new residences that will be constructed by Lennar Corporation. This subdivision has been before you previously, where you accepted and approved the agreements for improvements to be made to the both private and public areas of the subdivision, as well as agreements for affordable housing. And finally, a maintenance agreement of how to maintain all the storm drains as requirement for the C3 Perigene Water Quality Control Board. At this time, we have satisfied all the requirements of the original subdivision approval, the tentative map. And the developer has posted bonds for all the improvements that needs to be done to the public areas within the subdivision and adjacent to the subdivision. We would recommend that the council approve the final map at this point, which will be recorded with the county of San Mateo, as well as accepting all the public utility easements that are dedicated to the city. These are easements that would be required to provide access for emergency vehicles as well as utilities, storm drain, water, et cetera. That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Any questions on Cedar Mills? We're looking forward to this finally coming out of the ground. Been a long time. Any action?
I'll introduce the resolution.
Oh, good. Go ahead.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ibera?
Aye.
Mayor Ruen?
Aye. Item 11, reported commission sports and committees, we already had that a little earlier. And item 12, comments from council members? Anyone? Closed session? We had a closed session prior to this meeting, which was noticed. And this meeting will be adjourned. And the next city council meeting will be held on February 14th, 2012, right here at the senior center. Thank you.
Okay.